Please stand for the pleas, remain, stand for the prayer.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dear Heavenly Father, first we would like to say thank you on behalf of those who gathered here tonight. Thank you for the many abundant blessings for our community and thank you for just life itself and the measure of health that we need to fulfill our callings, for the substance and the friendship and the ability to gather as this group has to make decisions for this community. And one last thank you, go Purdue, way to beat Iowa State. Amen. I just had to get that in there. Cindy, would you take, roll call please?
Dan Vincent, Bob Leahy.
Yes.
Jim Hufford.
Yeah.
Tim Heiss.
Here.
Chad Spence.
Here.
See, a fresh head chance to review the consent agenda as presented, any changes, corrections? Not an entertaining motion?
I'll move that we accept the consent agenda as presented.
We have first to a second.
I'll second.
All those in favor of accepting the consent agenda say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the same sign. Department reports, I gotta, just kinda hope that Dan would be here tonight, got a notification from area planning, I'm either seeking a volunteer from the council to replace Dan for the area planning. He is, the rule is if you miss three consecutive meetings then they can give you a waiver or, unfortunately Dan's missed nine meetings so far, so I'm leaving it open if there's any, anybody would like to nominate anybody. Area planning, actually Jim, why don't you talk, touch base?
Well, what he'd like to do is move me over to the area, well, I'm on the Board of Zoning Appeals and Area Planning now, but they'd like to move me over to Dan's position since he's not there. That way even, because then I'd be under the citizen thing, even after the, I'm off the council, I can still settle the board.
Awesome, that's good. So in essence, it's to replace your...
Then Ryan could appoint somebody new from, to sit on the other seat.
But it's, but right now we'll need somebody from council.
Right.
To, to replace Dan.
Right.
Yeah, it meets once, once a month traditionally?
Yeah, once a month.
And it consists of...
Usually it meets at seven o'clock in the evening on the third, Thursday.
Okay.
Board of Zoning Appeals meets on Monday.
So, we have, just to give you an idea who's on there, Aaron Stevens, Paul Keister, John Reese, Andy Fowle, Bob McCoy, Don Calhoun, Gary Gerton, Jim Hufford, Brian Albertson, Missy Williams, Jason Welch is the attorney, Randy Abel is the director.
Mm-hmm.
And then Deborah joining is the recording secretary. Anyone, wanna make a nomination for anyone? Since nobody's volunteering?
I would've liked to have had a chance to talk to him in private, but I'd like to see if Bob would consider being nominated.
He'd be good on that.
He would look good on that.
I'd have to think about it, 'cause I'm, been with the Midwest TV and the council already, I'd have to think about it a little bit.
Love to see you consider it. I think you'd be a great...
Great asset.
Great asset to that.
And...
How soon do we have to...
Uh, well, right now, Dan's missed pretty much...
He missed everything since February, I think, January.
Yeah, yeah. So, they're, so they're running short.
Yep.
But they're still having enough work for them, is that correct?
Yeah, last time we just had a forum and one person would have ascended from something, the person would've just lost out, you know?
Meeting length is...
Usually, well, sometimes only a few minutes.
Okay.
And other times it might last an hour, depends on what we've got going on.
One of the things actually that plays into this is the discussion of the, it's on the agenda tonight, uh, the, where is it? Did she move, remove it? In regarding where we have single family and double.
The R, yeah.
The R, yeah.
We're looking on line.
So that's, that's one of the things that they're trying to clean up. Ryan, do you think of anything else that would play into this in the conversation regarding area planning that they...
I mean, I mean, I, I can't think of anything.
It's pretty, I mean, it's not, it's really, it talks about the zoning of, you know, when there's questions that come up, you have, you go...
That's, that's a big, if someone wants to change zoning or if they want to have a variance, I mean, since I've been, I know maybe two or three very contentious bids for variances that you had, you know, two-hour hearing and loads of people show up, but that doesn't happen very often.
That's pretty rare.
Yeah. The big one was that proposed, the dog food plant was gonna go out by...
Oh, yeah.
Ethanol.
Mm-hmm.
That was, I mean... Yeah, that's the biggest thing we had was the KFOs.
Oh, the KFOs.
Oh, my God.
Yeah.
We'll, we'll give you some time to think about it.
Okay.
Or, or time that we could put more pressure on you.
Yeah.
And you were short.
Also in my notes here, we've got ribbon cutting, Ted, you wanna talk a little bit about that? Yeah, look, not to put you on the spot, but...
Well, we'd like to invite all of you to come to the ribbon cutting ceremony. I think you're all familiar with the fact that we received one of the QIP grants from the state. We were one of 13 cities that received the grant and the intent of it was for gathering space or for alley improvements. And so we chose to do alley improvements and the, as you are aware, the city assisted with the art hub and then preservation applied for that grant. And if you've been back through the alley, either alongside the art hub or coming in from the back, you've probably seen the step van and also a couple late 50's cars along the side of the building. One of the reasons why we chose that is primarily because of Union City's connection with auto. It drove this community for many, many years. But, so anyway, as part of that grant, we have to have an official ribbon cutting ceremony and so we're doing that on Saturday, the 27th, at five o'clock after the Halloween event for the kids in Artisan Crossing. So if, if you're available, we'd love to have you there. We're gonna serve cups of chili and some cider and a few cookies, so there would be a little snack for you also, so, anyway, if you can attend, we'd appreciate it.
Appreciate that. Just another kind of update from Board of Works, if you notice, there's been a lot of, we've been doing some slurry sealing or micro-surfacing some of our side streets and whatever else. That's going on, actually, those streets look pretty good. Actually, you got one on South Columbia. Then the, making travels through town today, doing an Aqua, a company's called AquaLeak and they are checking our water system, see if there's any leaks in our water lines. We've detected over the past couple of years, it's well worth it to have them come in. We've had some, found some major leaks that's underground. And Brad's done some wellhead rehabbing, well number 21 has been refurbished as well. In our Board of Works meeting, probably some of you have already heard this, we had some lively discussion regarding centered around some of the vacant properties that some of the homeowners have that, they may be landlords where they're rehabbing a building and may have not done anything for two, three, four years. And so we instituted a minimum charge on sewage for a property that is, I think it's $35. We passed this ordinance back in January and we've just now instituted the billing process for that. So, what I explained to everyone is that when you have a property that it's, you're really subject to your neighbors. You're, you're, you have a commitment to the people that you own property around and it needs to be maintained and presentable. And so, you know, that's one of the reasons why we wanted to make sure that some of these properties don't fall into repair, because actually one of the gentleman came to it and said, he bought the, a couple of the properties at around $300 at a tax sale and he's owned them for approximately three years. And Ryan's one's near and dear to my heart, it's down across the street from you. And so, we gave them a little leeway to see that, and actually, I'm not gonna go through all of them, but everyone agreed that they are moving forward with the property. So we've got Schweiger involved and he's gonna make contact with them and verify that they are making headway. Because, you know, some of these homes, you know, if they were paying $300 for it, I asked them, I said, "Well, why haven't you done anything with it for the last couple of years?" So, we've got those underway and I think that is all I have, just looking at my notes Cindy, did Jan give you anything to talk about?
Uh, yeah, just one thing, she said there's gonna be a public hearing for additional appropriations before the next council meeting on November 12.
Okay. Council members, Chad?
Community Christmas, decorating's still continuing in the park. We're blessed, we've got 15 to 20 high school kids coming out this Friday and the following Friday, in which we should make significant headway in terms of everything being done. And please note that lights you see bundled from the trees, again, that's not the way they're gonna be, they're just that way right now because the mowing's still going on. So, we're waiting for the final mowing to take place before we stake everything out, so, thank you.
Jim?
I don't have it.
Jim? Bobby?
I just wanted to comment on the murals, I was, you know, drove through the alley last weekend and they're just beautiful and especially the step van, 'cause being a former employee, it really, really...
Well, I'll just make one other quick comment, Bob, since you mentioned that. What has been fun is that people that have worked at the body company, a lot of them have driven by and they're stopping and getting their pictures taken, but so, that's, that's was an unplanned aspect of the murals that has turned out really nicely.
It's very good. Good work, huh?
I will, I will add something here that, because of relating to that, I've had the privilege of escorting, being the guardian for my father for Honor Flight Saturday. And I say a lot about that, but one of the things in relation to UCBC, as we're driving down the street, I, the egghead I am, I'm looking at the long line of food trucks and I'm identifying the food trucks as we're going by and I'm, and I'd say roughly a third of the food trucks were UCBC trucks, of all ages, all the way from the last workhorse to some old steel trucks from the 70's even. And, so the legacy's still out there.
Uh, yes, the wastewater design plans are at IDEM, so they're reviewing those. They've got 90 days to review them, so hopefully at the, maybe a little less tight than that, we'll get their approval on that and we can continue to move forward with that project. We had taken bids on the 235, number of Walnut Street, properties, property that we received in tax sale and offered, as we do to the, during, or budding property owners. So we had two bids on that. We had a bid from the one property owner, land of $20 on the parcel and we had a bid from the other budding property owner wanting for $6,300. So the Board of Works recommended the wanting bid of $6,300.
Seriously?
No. I'm sorry. Well, a year from now, you gotta, 14 months from now, you gotta carry on that. One thing that I missed, when I was just, I've got it down, I wrote it down, adding the farm bid, would be the last thing under new business, so we'll come back to that. Nobody here from Chamber? Ryan?
Yes, just going down the list, establish the public access TV ordinance, I need to get with Chad or whomever.
Yeah, we need to set date this week.
Yeah.
I'm available, well, because of decorating, but community Christmas, let's shoot for Thursday afternoon, tell me what your schedule looks like Thursday afternoon after the meeting.
Okay, all right. Trains for contract for 310 West Oak, that has been signed by, I forget his name, Buford.
Buford?
White Edwards.
White Edwards, yeah.
Yeah, he's an interesting dude.
I know why they call Buford.
Yeah. Okay, quick claim deed, it also says 310 West Oak, I think that's actually supposed to be the Plum Street property.
Yeah, yeah.
Working on that, we do have that complete this week.
Uh, just, just so you know, the Plum Street property is the one on the alley, Plum and the church alley. It's right there.
Okay.
For, we made an offer on it for $5,000.
And then, the Arrow Clem property on 28 Deerfield Road, he came in and signed the quick claim deed today.
Cool.
That's, that will be recorded.
And that, that is Catty Corner from Russ Reichert's tree home out there, about a...
Two acres.
Two acres that he gave to the city.
Close to where the shadows.
Yeah, yep. Mm-hmm.
And then the Art One zoning, adopting the language for Art One, so I've been working with Jason Welch on that, to start that process.
Had to cling things up. I didn't realize how many, well, just like the property owners that we met with today, they, a lot of those were doubles. You know, so...
Yeah, there's a lot in there.
Yeah. Okay, that's all I have. One last thing I failed to miss, in your packets, I just wanna make sure that you get a chance to take a look at it, we're putting in the Randolph County Economic Development, basically what's going on there and just kinda keep everybody up to date and it includes tourism and community development for Missy Williams as well. We're still moving forward with the rental inspection, we're waiting until Steve gets back, him and Kobe, as of this coming Thursday, it'll be two weeks that they've been working down in Florida where the hurricanes dropped, so they've been, some of the folks from Ohio's made it back and they're still down there, so it, the pictures that they have sent, what you see on TV, it doesn't really give us, give it justice, so. Ordinance number 2018-19, it's under Old Business, it's the elected official salary ordinance for the second reading. Let's see if any, any questions or comments. So ordinance, fixing the annual compensation of elected officials of the civil city of Union City for the beginning year, first day of January 2019, extends to the first, first day of January 2020. Any, no questions, I'd entertain a motion.
I'll move we accept ordinance 2018-19, elected official salary ordinance on the second reading by title only.
First to a second.
I'll second.
Cindy, would you take roll call vote?
Dan Vincent, Bob Leahy.
Yes.
Jim Hufford.
Yes.
Tim Heiss.
Yes.
Chad Spence.
Yes. Okay, under New Business, we have the, the baseball property transfer. Spoke to Ryan and I think Ryan, or I, I think we should just keep the language that we have put together and just move forward with that and, because the land has to revert to someone or if, in the, in the event that a 501(c)(3) would, you know, go away or what else, it should always, you know, the message for the community would be that it reverts back, so.
To the community, to the city.
Yeah, yeah.
We did also bring up to him that even though they have that in the thing right now, they cannot convert over to anything other than a baseball park or a park.
Yeah.
We don't wanna sell it all for, for anything else.
Next item on the agenda is a stellar MOU. Monty, you wanna bring everybody up to date on this?
Memorandum of understanding to be involved in the Eastern Indiana Regional Stellar Application and we have, Backstay is our project in that, so we need to, if we wanna be involved in that, then we would need to execute the memorandum of understanding, so I think probably just, council to allow you to sign that.
Any questions from the council in that regards?
We can move that we grant the mayor authority to, for execution of the memorandum of understanding for group application for the regional stellar program.
We're first to a second.
I'll second.
Cindy, would you take roll call vote?
Dan Vincent, Bob Leahy.
Yes.
Jim Hufford.
Yes.
Tim Heiss.
Yes.
Chad Spence.
Yes. And I just, I don't know if you noticed, but the, the intensity and the vibrancy of Monty's discussion regarding stellar is right there with you. It's been painful.
Over the years.
Preservation Society, 306 Oak Street.
Yeah, if you don't mind, in your council packets, you should have what is headed as a proposal by the, is it, Catrons? Is that my pronouns, that correct, glass? Catrons Glass and then Ohio and Indiana Roofing. And this revol, this involves a historic structure that's pivotal to the downtown of Union City and we actually have here, we're blessed to have Mr. Ted Leahy from the Preservation Society that would like to have, give his brief input on the structure and, and the efforts of preservation, the ongoing efforts of preservation to the community. And then we also have Mr. Dan Russmiller here too, to answer any questions you guys may have, but the objective here, the premise of this being on the agenda is for the, to support the Preservation Society and their efforts from the council and the city's perspective. So, Ted, if you don't mind, I will hand the baton off to you.
Well, I think as many of you are aware, preservation was formed in the first place to save the Kirschbaum Building and that was a building that was slated to come down and it, it is what they call a keystone building in the downtown structure and the minute a corner building is gone, then everything else begins to be a problem. I think you've seen witness to that on the corner right up here and on the corner where the news building was before. So, the effort to maintain that building on the corner that was originally the Atlas Bank and two other businesses is really very important to the livelihood of the downtown. It's amazing and sometime I think you need to do this is to go upstairs in that building and look out the windows on the downtown because the downtown from that view is still very pretty. We don't think of it that way because we know what has been in these buildings before, but the structures of our buildings on the upper level are almost intact from the time that they were built. And this building, both upstairs and downstairs, is intact in many ways. So for instance, if you come in the very first corner of the building, you'll still see the tile floor that says the Atlas Bank and the bank was all down that side of the building and the, we have an industrious person who has purchased the building, who's with us and we wanna see that there is support and help behind this because one of the situations that preservation is facing, we used to do a lot of this work ourselves. I don't have anybody that can do the kind of work that we used to do when we, for instance, when we took on the Kirschbaum Building and when we redid the community room and when we did the old hotel museum and when we did the, you know, we keep going here. And we've run out of gas and we, and we've run out of bodies. So we need support from other parts of the community and, and parts of the city to get involved in saving what we do have. And so that's really why I've come to the meeting this evening and I think right now that building is one that we, is very important to retaining the visual history of Union City. So, I just wanted to call that to the attention of the council and see if there is some way that you can assist with that project, so I'll leave it at that.
Appreciate that so much. Yeah, now, from my knowledge of the situation, Dan Russmiller, if I understand correctly, your intentions are to restore, initial, initial phase, the bottom section is restoring the glass front and, and then the, also securing the building through a new roof on top, correct?
Yes.
And then second phase, if you will, I guess would entail restoring the top half with the windows, correct?
Facade, yes.
Okay, so basically all facade work. And, and you've already removed the internal, the, the drop ceiling inside to restore the, or to basically unveil the tin ceiling that's inside?
Yeah, I'm gonna restore the tin ceiling on the west side and the east front, or which was the Atlas Bank.
Very good.
My attention is that the entry on the east side now is an after.
The, the original entry was on the corner, just like the Apothecary Shop here, where it has a post out on the corner and the entry was back in at an angle and that's where it says the Atlas Bank in the floor, I wanna bring that back.
That's awesome.
Well, what I would like to propose to council, because again, and you guys have heard me jump up to this pulpit or step up on this pedestal before in terms of, the sad thing is the downtown, the downtown, there's no mistaking is the heart of a community. And people, when they go through a town for the first time, their judgment of a community is generally made on the downtown. So when we talk about drawing industry or drawing new homes or drawing new residents into the community, how well are we putting our best foot forward by the way our downtown, you know, the principal downtown and, and the surrounding community? So, and then in addition to that, unfortunately, you see when these buildings go, they're gone. There, there's no bringing them back and, and to, and to actually to build, if you're, as I think Ted mentioned, if you could go up on the second floor of this building, the woodwork that exists in some of these older buildings, to build something like that nowadays would be a proverbial mint and it would be, it would be a tall order that would be beyond the scope of anything that, that we're capable of right now in this community. So, we have the ability to maintain and preserve and protect what we already have been gifted. So with that being said, I would like to, as a council member, I'd like to throw out on the floor a proposal, a motion, if you will, of a 50% matching for the facade work and this is, this is simply a line to what we originally proposed in our stellar program as well, so this isn't anything that's left field, it's consistent with what we've proposed as a business plan in the past. A 50% matching grant that would, 50% matching for the materials and basically the window and the roof both and then also the, the labor that's already been executed or the labor that's been performed already on, by Dan's, on Dan's behalf, which is listed in here, I think it's $4,000 is what's listed by the company, is that correct? So I don't have a dollar amount specific unfortunately, without doing the math on figuring those up on those proposals, they're in here though.
Hang on, let me see it.
Yeah, so it'd be, let's see here, scroll down where it says, 33-543?
Yeah.
It's the one plus...
I have to choose off.
16-850, plus 16,000, 850. 850.
850. No, that's, that's...
16,006.
Yeah, yeah, 16,000. Hey, we can learn that.
You didn't teach math, did you Ted? Might need some help.
I do have a math degree, I've always kept it a secret.
Okay, we're good, we may need you in a few seconds. Back in those days, Ted, back in those days, didn't they use an abacus? Oh geez.
She was robbed.
Fingers.
Fingers.
That's the worst.
So, anybody doing better with their calculator than me?
Sorry, I didn't mind pull up.
I like...
I'll do it separately. 16,977, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, 15, 16, 17, 18, 19, 20, 21, 22, 23, 24, 25, 26, 27, 28, 29, 30, 31, 32, 33, 34, 35, 36, 37, 38, 39, 40, 41, 42, 43, 44, 45, 46, 47, 48, 49, 50, 51, 52, 53, 54, 55, 56, 57, 58, 59, 60, 61, 62, 63, 64, 65, 66, 67, 68, 69, 70, 71, 72, 73, 74, 75, 76, 77, 78, 79, 80, 81, 82, 83, 84, 85, 86, 87, 88, 89, 90, 91, 92, 93, 94, 95, 96, 97, 98, 99, 100.
Could I add discussion? Could this be paid into next year? Build now but paid in January?
Yeah, I would like, yeah, that would be the other part of the proposal, to propose pulling it out of the first of January for the new, New Year's set of funds.
Or are projects...
Yeah, there you go.
Would that be agreeable? Yeah. I heard something rattling going with this.
This would actually be...
So you want to make that...
Yeah, I would make that...
He was still working on the motion.
Or a motion to be made to the Preservation Society in support of their efforts.
We have, we have a motion, we have first to a second?
I'll second.
Cindy, would you take roll call vote?
Dan Vincent, Bob Leahy?
Yes.
Jim Huffer?
Yes.
Tim Heiss?
Yes.
Chad Spence?
Yes. Cool.
Thank you, Jim.
Appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
We have a blight resolution number 2018-R-06. It's a slum and blight area declaratory resolution, City of Union City Resolution 2018-R-06. Whereas the City of Union City desires to eliminate blighted areas within the corporate limits of the Union City specifically unknown of the downtown area. Whereas defining such areas is necessary for effective action to eliminate blighting conditions. And whereas public improvements such as blighted and abandoned structures have severely deteriorated contributing to blighting conditions. And whereas the downtown area has been, experienced a cessation of private investment since 2005. Whereas 30% of the first floor commercial, 80% of the second floor commercial space and 40% of the total commercial space of the downtown city is currently vacant. And whereas 30% of the downtown commercial buildings are deteriorated as evidenced by the structural failure and poor conditions of these commercial buildings. Be resolved to save Union City and following that the area of the Union City we hereby designate as an area redevelopment be designated as an area in need of redevelopment and defined by Indiana Code 36-7-14 from West Hickory Street south along North Union Street to West Pearl Street. Then east along West Pearl Street to State Line Road, along State Line Road to Chestnut Street and west, along West Chestnut Street to North Palm Street. Long north, along North Palm Street and West Hickory Street. East on West Hickory and north to Union Street as at the beginning. You further than that, the resolution shall be in effect as the final date of passage and approval of the council of the City of Union City and the mayor of the civil city of Union City, Indiana. Monty, you want to kind of explain what the...
Yeah, this is what is needed to apply for the Indiana's new blight grant. They've made it a lot more accessible because they weren't getting any applications much from the way that they first had it figured. So, so they've made this a much simpler process. And so we are in process of applying for that to make some abandoned and blighted structures in the downtown area. So we would need this blight grant to satisfy that requirement of the grant.
Is there, is there anything targeted for this so far in that, in this space, in the zone that you got?
It's not, it's not named in there.
Okay.
How about the corner across from what the structure we just discussed? The structure that's still standing, that used to be part of the new times.
That'd be eligible as would these buildings here next to the code plan if it would come to that.
Well, my reservation would be is, is, I think every effort would be that we could maintain the buildings versus demoing them. And, I mean, it's like the corner building right here. I'm sure I'd see that go down. Spoke to an individual last week that's very interested in that, even though it's in such poor condition. And I copied you guys on the text with him, so. But any other discussions from council on this in that regard?
Is this aimed, is the grant, what is the grant's focus? Is it aimed at demo or is it aimed at restoration?
No, this is for demo.
Well, we may have some things come up such as the heart building. That's, while I hate to see that go, is may very well end up at the fact that it's in hands now that's doing nothing with it.
We have been contacted with them that...
What's the location of that?
It's across from Oak Street Antiques.
Yeah, across from Oak Street Antiques, next to the hotel.
The old Texaco building and on down.
But it doesn't, in no ways, I mean, the, the grant that we would apply for, would it be, you said it's not specific?
There's nothing targeted.
Right, it's not specific, but to apply for anything. So this merely is a matter of giving us the flexibility.
Yeah.
Correct. Life work does not hold us or handcuff us in terms of what we seek to do.
If we get the, if we get the okay on this part of the grant, then we identify a building, then we apply for, we can apply for up to $750,000. And you can do that over three or four years.
Now let me go to you one further. Does it have to be considered dilapidated or can it be also anything that's not into the theme of the historic structures? Because the yellow building that's built next to the old, the...
Ice cream.
Yes.
I agree, I can't even think straight.
Right down in the street here, the sided building.
Hawkins Appliance.
Used to be Hawkins Appliance, though.
Oh. The Johnston Building.
Because I guess to be consistent in our language and the things we do, we talked about not wanting homes built sideways or like the, you know, the kit homes and we don't want them built sideways because it doesn't go with the neighborhood that's built into it. How, I, I don't, and I'm not trying to step on anybody's toes that tried, that had that built or whatnot, but it just unfortunately, it's not the right place for it with the downtown.
Not the right facade.
Yeah, exactly. And it just looks like it's completely out of place.
I'll throw an alternative out there, though. One of the things that we might be, one that keeps in mind for that is, is as we do this is possibly an all change of facade on that building. Could very, might be very feasible to do is to put a different facade on it and it could be modified to...
To bring it up to...
To bring it to enough in different appearance, enough appropriate appearance to fit in as opposed to demoing.
Yeah, this is just strictly for dilapidating the structures. Has to be blighted.
Any other discussion? Not, I would entertain a motion.
Well, as long as, you know, it's not binding us. It's just to hit, yeah, this is to open the door in case we need to...
I'll make a motion that we adopt the resolution 2018-R-6 on the blighted resolution. We have a first to a second?
I'll second.
Cindy, would you take roll call vote?
Dan Vincent, Bob Leahy?
Yes.
Jim Huffer?
Yes.
Tim Heiss?
Yes.
Chad Spence?
Yes.
Next on the agenda is Property Transfer Resolution 2018-R-07. Requesting to transfer a certain real estate from Randolph County Commissioners, City of Union City. Monty, you want to go through these parcels and explain where they're at?
Yes, sir. The, two of the parcels are out on 32, where Cards and Parts is, you know, as you go around the curve there. They actually have but to where Ron Moore has his auction house, if that's helpful, across the street from Pizza Hut, if that's... There are two of those odd shaped triangles of parcels that are there. Of course, we've demoed them for since we've taken the pot, but we do have, Ron Moore isn't interested in those parcels, so that's why we're filing for those. Hopefully get them to somewhere so somebody else can demo. Then we have 335 with Howard Street is the property where we tore the house down across from Presbyterian Church. And what other ones are there?
Turner Street.
Turner Street is where we, we tore that little...
Yeah, okay.
Little super dilapidated house down on Turner. And I think I've got my buddy in property there that's interested in that one, so.
Perfect, okay. Any questions on this?
No, I would move motion to adopt the resolution number R-07-2018, which is the request to transfer a certain real estate from the Randolph County Commissioners to the, to the City of Union City.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Cindy, would you take a roll call vote, please?
Dan Vincent, Bob Leahy?
Yes.
Tim, Jim Huffer?
Yes.
Tim Heiss?
Yes.
Chad Spence?
Yes.
Next item is ordinance number 2018-20. It's the chicken and fowl ordinance. This is the first reading. This is ordinance to amend chapter 90 of the ordinances of the City of Union City. Whereas the City of Union City Common Council desires to regulate the harboring of chicken and fowl within the city limits of the City of Union City as a public health concern. Therefore, the common council hereby directs and ordains the following language to be added to chapter 90 of the codified ordinances of the City of Union City. Keeping of chicken or fowl in a residential district. A person is permitted to keep or house chicken or fowl on his or her property located in a residential district unless doing so would create a nuisance and violation of chapter 94 of the city's codified ordinances. A person who keeps or houses chickens on his or her property shall comply with all following requirements. Keep no more than six chickens or fowl, or other fowl. The principal use of the person's, the person's property is for a single family dwelling or a two-family dwelling. No person shall keep any roosters. The chicken or other fowl shall be provided with a covered enclosure and must be kept in a covered enclosure or fenced enclosure at all times. A person shall not keep chicken or other fowl in any location on the property other than in the backyard. The purpose of this section backyard means that a portion of the lot enclosed by the property's near rear lot line and the side lot lines to the points where the side lot lines intersect with an imaginary line established by the rear by the rear of the single family or two-family structure extending to the side lot lines. No covered enclosure shall be located closer than 10 feet to any property line of any adjacent property. All enclosures for keeping of chicken or other fowl shall be so constructed or repaired as to prevent rats, mice, or other rodents from being harbored underneath within or within the walls of the enclosure. A cover enclosure or fenced enclosure shall not be located closer than 20 feet of the residential structure or an adjacent property. The purposes in this section is adjacent property means all parcels of property that the applicant's property comes into contact with at one or more points, except for parcels that are legally adjacent to but are in fact separated by the owner's property or by a public or private street. All feed and other items associated with the keeping of chicken or other fowls are likely to be, to attract or become infested with or infected by rats, mice, or other rodents shall be protected as to prevent rights, rats, mice, or other rodents from gaining access to or coming into contact with. Whatever violates any of the provisions in this section is guilty of a minor misdemeanor penalty and shall be provided in section 90-99. This has been kind of an ongoing thing for a number of years.
Is there an ordinance now that allows them to have chickens in town?
What's that?
Is there an ordinance now that allows them to have chickens in town?
It doesn't, it doesn't specify. And we had to clean up the language. That's what we're doing, is cleaning up the language in this section.
You know, because, you know, you stop and think about it, most people move to a city because they don't want to be around the farmers.
Thank you.
You know, I mean, and are we going to start getting claimers out when people move here? That they might be moving in next to somebody that could be putting chickens into their property next door? You know, we have to do that in the county now because of the CAFOs, that they could be built next to them. Nobody's allowed to buy a property without signing a disclaimer first. Are we going to do that? You know, I don't know. It just seems like something we're going backwards. We're wanting to get rid of blight, then we know we're bringing chickens in.
We already got the chickens.
We already got the chickens.
Yeah, I know, but we can get rid of them because they're rest law. But my mother had to move her chickens out when they...
No, there is nothing that prohibits people from...
It was county law or something because they did. They made her move about years ago, back in the 50s.
Well, back then, you could go to somebody and say, hey, clean up your yard. And, you know, places would go down and tell them that. But now, there is no, there is no, nothing restricts it. We have, we have a couple...
Why don't we pass an ordinance to restrict it and not give them permission to do it?
Well, this, this is, Monty, really, I'm staying corrected, is it came from a standing ordinance from another community?
Yeah, and hey, I don't have a problem if you just...
Well, they can allow horses if they want. I don't mean we have to.
If you want a completely outlawed ordinance, but, you know, I think you're going to have issues with that.
Because we're opening up something that can keep on going. And if I want to put a pig in.
They're here now.
They're here now.
No restrictions.
Yeah.
Actually, the county has no restrictions. When I called area planning for this, they said, well, we're working on something, but we don't have anything right now, so.
Well, you have to area plan whether or not they have anything. We did finally take, they would take a variance on kids that are in 4H could have a chicken or a rabbit or something like this inside the city limits, but up until then, they couldn't do that.
This at least gives you some parameters on it, but...
Yeah, they have to get permission, you know, like over in Winchester, they have to go to area plan and get a variance from them, from Randy.
We had an issue, we had an issue in the county did, Ridgeville?
Yeah, Ridgeville, where they had those ones there. We had a hard time with that one.
Well, that's...
That's what I say.
Because there was no...
And I don't want to see that happen here.
Well, are you asking that, that strike and actually modify this so there's no provisions for chickens or fowls? That's a...
Well, it's something we should discuss, I mean, most all of us, you know, but it's got to be an agreement, but it also gets...
No, no, I mean, I'm asking from a point of view, is that what you would like to see? And I'm asking all the council members.
That's what I would like to see.
Yeah, that's what I'd like to see also.
Have a chicken...
Because we've got a new housing area coming in town. Are we going to allow chickens to be built next to a new home that somebody moved into town to get away from?
Anybody, I mean, I, Tim, you have any thoughts before we...
Go ahead. I'm a little agnostic on it as far as one or the other, I'll leave it just for... I'm happy with the, if we're going to have chickens, I'm fairly happy with the restrictions here.
You know, so many things to consider, you know, the waste. What, we haven't gotten in there provision of what they're going to do with the waste. They're going to have a pile out in the backyard? Back of the alley?
Well, we've got, we've got ordinances that...
Yeah, but I'm just saying, that's what, I think they say, well, it's a compost pile. Well, now it falls under a different thing, see?
We do have ordinances on the book.
You see what I'm talking about? I don't think it's, it looks like we're moving backwards instead of forward.
Well, I'm just saying, you got it now.
Just get rid of the junk car, but must have put chickens in.
You got chickens, you got turkeys, you got ducks, you got roosters.
And they shouldn't be.
Whatever, right now with no regulations at all.
Now, they shouldn't be.
So either, yeah, so if you're going to have, you know, it would probably be appropriate to have some kind of regulations or not have them at all.
We need some kind of regulations or get rid of them first.
Bobby?
None. Not having at all.
Not at all.
I'd go either way.
I'm saying, I'd just like having no roosters. That's my biggest thing because...
Yeah, but how about somebody move in next door to you? Your neighbor puts in three or four peacocks at Collins all day.
Well, that becomes...
I didn't have nuisance ordinances.
No, that's the law, five.
Peacocks aren't foul?
Yeah, they're foul. That's what I'm saying. They're being loud.
Well, we've...
That's what's a new rooster.
We talked about that, we were... I don't know whether nuisance ordinances address that at all or not.
But if it's legal, then the new ones are going to take care of that.
Well, I mean, so we got two that are totally against it and two that are indifferent for the most part, so.
Well, I just, I don't know, I just get my feeling that we're, we're trying so hard to clean this town up and make things right. -and make things right, make it a place pleasant to live in, and then we start bringing this in.
I guess my question is, is that, that-
I don't think any farm animals should be allowed in town.
What is our complaint level at this point?
It's been high.
From the standpoint of, is the complaint-
For all poultry.
That the poultry are a complete nuisance, or, and, and I guess the, my question is that complaints are the complaints that they don't want the poultry, don't want them there at all, or-
Yeah.
-they don't want the, the fact that they're not maintained?
Let me just, let me run down the list. You got smell, you got, uh, roaming loose in a neighborhood and eating up their flowers.
Right.
Uh, the noise factor, because of, yeah, and, uh, just the, the crap in their, their yards now. I mean, that, that's off the top of my head, that's came to me.
Yeah, it's just, I know down here on the corner of Pearl Street and, what is, Walnut Street there, you got them in the front yard. And plus, you must have ducks too, because every once in a while, I see the ducks out running around on the street.
Well, if it's causing nuisance to others, then that's a problem. Because getting back to what we were talking about earlier, what the mayor mentioned, you know, our responsibility is to ensure that when you buy a property, you're not negatively affected by the people around you.
Right.
We all have responsibilities and a degree of accountability to our neighbors when we live in a community. Now, if you live out in the middle of nowhere, that's different, but when you're in a community, by definition, you've got some accountability to each other. So, um, if that's the issue, and if we're getting a significant amount of complaints, that kind of changes the complexion of it for me. I have not received any complaints.
I know, I've brought in complaints about it, that people have called me about, in our area, and it's, just keeps mushrooming, it's getting more.
I think birds and cats are bad enough.
Yeah, and that's another thing.
And we're just adding, you know, just adding more to the problem.
Right, and what if the people move out and they're not allowed to take them with them, are they just going to turn loose like they did bogs and cats?
Well, I think that, and, and anybody can abuse any of these things. One of the things that I guess we could see if we talk about a moratorium or, you know, eliminating it, then if the people that, that want to have these, have birds, want to petition us and, and give us a legitimate argument why they shouldn't be allowed, then they, they have that, that priority.
No, they take their planning, then-
Should we have a public hearing on it, or?
No, I think, this, I think this is something that we, you just take a stand on one way or the other. I think it's, because this has been going on for a couple of years now.
And if they build a chicken coop, they're going to have to get a building permit, because there's a structure going up in the yard.
But here, now, I'm going to turn it back around, area planning does, does not enforce their, their own code, so.
Well, that's, like I've been to Holland and Ashes, I've been to area planning.
So.
They try, but they don't have any things to force with. I just don't want to see it going backwards.
Well, if we're, if we're going to go that direction, then we probably need to, I mean, we can, we need to rewrite in terms of the-
We, we have a, an ordinance that says no agricultural animals.
Right.
And it, and then it gets specific, but-
It doesn't include foul.
It doesn't include chickens specifically, fowl, and we actually had a case probably two, three years ago, and the judge, and I think correctly interpreted that ordinance to not include chickens.
That's-
Why can't we just change it?
So, I mean, you can.
So can we, if we could just amend that ordinance?
Right.
Now, I guess my question is that, I haven't looked at, I meant to look that ordinance up, but my week kind of got a little, lately got a little rough. Does that ordinance mention of the other types of animals? That's probably why the judge, if you said agricultural animals and, you know, all agricultural animals, then, then the judge could probably interpret that as chickens too, but when it defined certain animals, then left out certain levels.
Right, right.
Then that, that let, that opened the door.
Yeah.
Can I make a comment there? If, if you're going to do that, make sure that that ordinance includes peacocks and guinea fowl, they're much noisier.
We should just foul, foul them generally.
Foul.
Well, any foul.
Yeah, any foul.
Okay, I, but, I wouldn't want it to be left to, for somebody to keep guineas in the backyard or a pair of peacocks, because they'll wake up the neighborhood real quick.
Or emus, or anything else, you can, you don't want them running.
Yeah.
Oh, serges.
Okay, we will, will modify, can, or, Ryan, can you just pull that up and we'll just add that language to it? Next item is ordinance twenty eighteen dash twenty-one, it's junk car ordinance.
This was, uh, brought up by code enforcement, and it, this pretty much goes in place of existing ordinance and has some more specific language in it to kind of address the problem.
It is so specific that for the, the, those in the audience, if you would like a copy, I would give you a copy of it, because it's quite lengthy.
Mm-hmm.
Highly details the issues that we're, have experienced with dealing with abandoned vehicles, junk vehicles, uh, that are being left in somebody's back of the yard or the property or whatever else, so. This is ordinance, uh, twenty eighteen dash twenty-one, ordinance to amend the chapter ninety-seven of the ordinances of the city of Union City. Is there any questions from council? Because like I said, it's quite lengthy.
I have no questions, but I will make a motion.
All right.
So, barring no questions or comments, I will move that we adopt ordinance number two thousand eighteen dash twenty-one, which is the ordinance to amend chapter ninety-seven of the ordinances of the city of Union City by title only in the first reading.
One second, Doc. We have a first and a second. Cindy, would you take roll call vote, please?
Dan Vincent, Bob Leahy?
Yes.
Jim Hopper?
Yeah.
Tim Heiss?
Yes.
Chad Spence?
Yes.
Next item is ordinances, our ordinance number twenty eighteen dash twenty-two, it's the grass ordinance. Ordinance number twenty eighteen dash twenty-two is ordinance declaring it unlawful to rake, place, or mow fallen tree leaves or grass clippings in the pavement onto the gutter of, of any public street. And, uh, that's, the title in itself is pretty much, describes what, what the issue is. What we're having is, since we was a, one heck of a wet spring, summer, and fall, where people, when they mow their yard, they blow the grass clippings, and then it gets into our collection system, and then we have to deal with it there. And, uh, any, so the street sweeper went out a couple, you know, a couple of weeks ago, and, uh, it's so packed down on, in some of these streets that it doesn't even come up with a street sweeper now, because of all the rain and whatever else, it's, so, and it's, on the sidewalks, I walk a lot down Oak Street and whatever else, and it, there's a couple houses down there that, uh, when it's wet, it's like walking on ice, so, there's, there's a lot of issues with people doing that.
That, that also goes on the road for motorcycles and bicycles, it's extremely dangerous.
Yeah, so. It's unfortunate, you have to come up with things, ask people not to do them.
Uh, now, need to clean up stuff like this, if they don't rake them out to the curb, and they don't take them off the curb, it's a bother, what they're doing.
It's, there's a, there's, it's got that, where's that?
Provision in there.
Provision, it says, this section does not prohibit the placing of brush along the curb, which is eligible for pickup under brush, doesn't look to addresses when we pick up.
Okay.
That's kind of vague in regard, it does say brush, but then it say leaves.
Says the section does not prohibit the placing of brush along the curb.
Yeah, full leaf, there it is, there it is.
Unless you're a citizen of Union City during fall leaf collection, there you go.
Yeah.
Section one.
Any other questions or comments?
Which, we're not, the leaf collection, we're not supposed to get an inordinate amount of grass clippings with that anyway, so.
So, leaf collection, we can still put it-
You still put the leaves out, yeah.
In the gutter.
Right.
And we're going to have to make sure the city crew knows about that too, because I've seen, when they moved a couple of places down around us there, it's, it's really thrown out in the street.
Yeah.
Any other questions or comments?
I move that we adopt ordinance number two thousand eighteen dash twenty-two, which is ordinance declaring it unlawful to rake, place, or mow fallen tree leaves or grass clippings on the pavement or onto the gutter of any public street, uh, on the first reading by title only.
We have a first and a second?
I'll second.
Cindy, would you take roll call vote, please?
Dan Vincent, Bob Leahy?
Yes.
Jim Hopper?
Yes.
Tim Heiss?
Yes.
Chad Spence?
Yes.
We also have the farm bid opening today, uh, the farm bids for our land, uh, the two bids, the two bidders was Tillman and J.J. Stewart?
Sergeant.
Sergeant.
Sergeant Farms.
And Tillman's had no restriction, and J.J. had a restriction, had to be a three-year contract. J.J. had the higher bid, but with, and we explained to him when he was here before, in light of where we were at regarding the possibility, or actually, we've got it already laid out for a housing developer on that land, that, uh, the board of works recommended, but the council has final say. Tillman's bid was at two-ten per acre, and J.J. Sargent was at two-twenty-one per acre. So, it's, and, so you have, you have them in front of you, but the, the J.J. Sargent was for, was a three-year commitment.
Okay. Remind us. So, so, yeah, I, I move that we accept the proposal, proposed bid by Tillman for the farm acreage.
We have a first and a second?
I'll second.
Cindy, would you take roll call vote, please?
Dan Vincent, Bob Leahy?
Yes.
Jim Hopper?
Yeah.
Tim Heiss?
Yes.
Chad Spence?
Yes.
And in the last page, I just wanted to point out, it's a code enforcement report from January to October of twenty eighteen. Uh, it's pretty remarkable, there's two, six hundred eighty-two cases, uh, we have right now about a hundred and twenty-four that's pending and the thirty-four that are actually in court action. People are really complying, Dennis has done a good job of trying to keep on top of this and, and just remind people, you know, you live in a community, like we said before, you live in a community, you, you got to be fair to your neighbors of how, how your structure and your property's going to look, so, appreciate all the work he's doing there. Any visitors wishing to address council? Not? Date next council meeting is Monday, November the twelfth, and next board of works meeting is Monday, November the twelfth at two P.M.